Seven o'clock, I will call this meeting to order. Dan, it looks like we are live broadcasting, is that right?
We will be momentarily, it's just setting it up and it's live as of now.
Okay, excellent, fantastic. Welcome, everybody. Call this meeting to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Here.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Mayor Bain?
Here. And I'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, invite everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'd like to turn off your camera, you may do so. Give you just a moment. And please write for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That may have been our worst yet. We'll do it, we'll have another shot, we'll get this before we're done.
It was muted.
All right, council, council, you have an agenda before you. If we could have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening or any changes?
Make a motion.
A motion to approve the agenda. There'll be Gerard.
I'll second it.
Motion by, motion by councilmember Gerard, second by councilmember Beistrum. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson? Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
Mayor Bain?
Hi. And agenda this evening is approved. First item on our agenda is our open forum reminder to anybody who is watching that we are still accepting public comments and public comment is as important to now as it's ever been. Public comment can be made by submitting emails to info@cityofforestlake.com and if you would note in your subject line that it is an item for open forum, we will know that you intend for that message to be read aloud in a public meeting and we again welcome those public forum comments. Dan, I believe we have a couple of submissions for this evening. Do you want to walk us through those?
Yeah, Mayor Bain, there are three public comments that were received and I'll read them in order that they were received. So the first one is from Patrick Hansen. I mean, it goes, "My name is Patrick Hansen and I live at 20425 Everton Avenue North in Forest Lake. My family moved up to Forest Lake almost six years ago. We absolutely love the city and its people. I have a safety concern that has been an ongoing issue in my neighborhood. The particular stretch of road I live on is curvy and is lined with residential houses and townhomes. I am proposing that the city installs always stop signs at the corner of Everton Avenue and Everton Trail. Currently, there is a pedestrian crosswalk that cars may be stopped for 50% of the time with people present. I have seen many cars blow right through with small children waiting to cross and even when they are in the crosswalk. I feel there should be some sort of break on that road that would help with speed and keep people alert. I challenge anyone to come sit in my front yard anytime and just observe. I have reached out to Dan Undem with the city and he has been somewhat helpful. He said the city will change the signs out to bright green and up the police presence in the area. I feel that this will be a temporary Band-Aid for what could be a life-threatening situation. A simple stop sign might save, might save a someone's life. I have spoke to many neighbors regarding the, regarding the situation and have yet to meet one person that doesn't agree with my concern. I spent two hours Saturday morning going door to door in the neighborhood, asking people to sign my petition. I have copied everyone on this email with the hope that the city understands that it is, that it is just not one person who is concerned. I am very frustrated with the situation but don't want to sound like I am needy or whiny. I am generally concerned for the children in the neighborhood. If it means I need to keep pestering the city to potentially save a child's life, then that's what I'll do. God forbid something happens to a child. I would not be able to live with myself. Thank you all very much for the time. Please feel free to reach out with any questions." Patrick Hansen. Then, second one here is from, from Kevin and Tammy Dunruh. Says, "Dear Forest Lake Mayor and City Council members, for the past three years, we've struggled with a noise issue from our neighbors' roosters. At the city council meeting in January 2020, we provided you with a recording of the rooster crowing, which we took from our deck. Because of the rooster noise, we cannot open our windows or enjoy our deck. Guests have also commented on it. Here are the steps you have taken to deal with the issue. One, contacted neighbor directly. Two, talked to Donovan Hart numerous times. Three, had police come as chickens have gotten out and come into our yard. Four, met with city council member Kathy Beistrum and the Forest Lake City Administrator. Five, we have been told by Donovan Hart that the neighbor told them that this is a personal issue. It is not. It is a noise issue, no different than a barking dog. So we have come again tonight to ask the council to consider changing the current ordinance. The ordinance states that no roosters are allowed, allowed north of 202nd. However, these neighbors are allowed to have them because of an outdated acreage allowance ordinance. The chicken coop is directly across from our deck. This is a residential area and should be treated the same as other residential areas of the city, which have no, which have a no-rooster ordinance. We live in this area because it has been, it has been a peaceful community. However, our rights to peace and quiet are being violated. We are also concerned about a decline in our property value when the time comes to sell our home. Finally, as this is an unnecessary noise, it should be enforced according to bookmark 96-04Z, which states, "All unnecessary noises which tend to disturb the peace and repose of neighboring, of neighboring property owners. We thank you in advance for your consideration to this issue and we look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Kevin and Tammy Dunruh." The last one we have is a letter from Mike and Tracy, hopefully I don't pronounce the last name too bad, Lubavitch. On the subject is a stop sign request for Everton Trail North. Says, "My name is Mike Lubavitch and I reside at 20454 Everton Trail North, Forest Lake, Minnesota, 55025. I reside there with my wife Tracy, my three children, age nine, 11, and 13. We have lived at this address since June of 2006. I am petitioning the council to strongly consider adding a stop sign to improve the safety of the intersection at Everton Avenue North and Everton Trail North. This intersection has the only crosswalk that feeds a neighborhood of 55 houses where over 100 children live. Issues: One, the unlit intersection is along a slight hill combined with the curve. The curve causes the pillar of the driver's vehicle to form a blind spot when approaching from the north or south. In addition, Everton Avenue North is a thoroughfare that feeds multiple developments to the south of that intersection. Everton Avenue North has a right-of-way for eight tenths of a mile from Minnesota Highway 97 in the north and ends at 202nd Street North, a T-intersection in the south. To the intersection's south, cars are also allowed to and frequently park on the street along both sides, which reduces driver visibility. Two, as this thoroughfare feeds hundreds of houses to the south to the intersection in question, it is traversed by residents, guests, and commercial service vehicles at a high rate. There is a crosswalk sign present, crosswalk with an arrow pointing down, but this intersection lacks a crosswalk ahead sign whether the north or the south approaching lanes, crosswalk without an arrow altering crosswalk ahead, or excuse me, alerting crosswalk ahead. Three, Summerfield Park is frequented, frequented by hundreds of kids that live in the Everton Trail North loop, but the one crosswalk at the intersection in question is dangerous to cross. Four, I have personally witnessed vehicles not seeing or stopping for myself, my children, other pedestrians, and other kids. This is through a mixture of inattentive driving, blocked vision slash blind spots, and nearly, and the nearly mile of right-of-way that naturally builds speed. The least expensive solution and the one that will have the most effect on the safety of the pedestrians is the installation of a stop sign. Thank you in advance for your consideration. I understand that a lot goes into making these decisions. I have witnessed too many close calls at this intersection. I know the council can avoid future tragedy that awaits this intersection if nothing is done. Finally, thank you for your service to our beloved community. Sincerely, Mike and Tracy Lubavitch." Those are the three that I have for open forum.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. We'll move on this evening to our consent agenda. Council before you, the consent agenda this evening consists of items 6A through 6G. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes?
Madam Mayor, okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Beistrum?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
And councilhusnick, a second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those, Karen, clear a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Mayor Bain?
Hi. Our consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our action agenda this evening. Item 7A is Resolution 05112002, which is the approval of the medical services agreement. Chief Peterson, are you walking us through that this evening?
Yes, I can. Mayor and city council members, as you, as you know, M Health Fairview is a newly expanded collaboration among the University of Minnesota, University of Minnesota Physicians and Fairview Health Services. Fairview Health Services held a contract with North Ambulance Services, which is set to expire at the end of the, of this month. The new M Health Fairview will be utilizing their own ambulance services for our area through Health East. With that being said, the medical services agreement in your packet is authorizing M Health Services to designate a qualified physician as the medical director or up to two physicians who will share in the performance of medical director duties as shown on the last page of the agreement titled Statement of Work. The medical director gives all paramedics, EMTs, and first responders, those out in the field providing life-saving efforts and first aid to our residents, the direction needed regarding policies, procedures, and the training necessary in order for us to do our jobs. Our city attorney has reviewed this agreement and my recommendation is to have this agreement approved. Do you have any questions for me?
Council, any questions of chief on this agreement? Councilmember Beistrum?
Just a couple of things. I know that we had some concerns expressed at an earlier meeting. Chief Peterson, you know, we have had a longstanding relationship with North and I am just, I'm assuming bringing this forward that those issues of concern have been adequately resolved. And I'm just curious as to whether or not there were some, you know, maybe changes in the agreement that may have worked positively for us. I know North has been really involved in safety camp in past years. And then my other question for you is who, who provides air ambulance services, medevac services moving forward? Do we continue to contract with North on that?
I can say that we have had a lot of discussions between myself, Fire Chief Al Newman, and Police Captain Greg Weiss in regards to a lot of those concerns that were brought up. And after meeting and discussing with them, those concerns, those concerns have been put to rest. We are pretty pleased with what we've seen and, and what we've heard. So we are looking forward to this new collaboration with the city of Forest Lake. In regards to the air care, I probably need to reach out to Captain Weiss. He might actually know that answer. Can you give some input to that, maybe Captain Weiss?
Yeah, when it comes to air ambulances, it's not a contracted service. It's whoever's available and closest. So we have Lifelink, which houses an air ambulance in Blaine, and North still houses their area ambulance, one in Princeton and one over the border just in Wisconsin. So it's whoever's closest and can get there the fastest is how the call goes down to the state and they, or the dispatch and they figure out to who's their medic is closest and launches from there. So more than likely, it'll continue to be North. There's not a lot of competition with that. It's, it's, they've, in my, in my experience, has been to save the life and not the dollar. So we're going to have adequate, they're not moving any of their, any of their choppers. Nobody is.
Okay, good, thank you.
Other questions of staff? I had a couple. I just wanted to make sure I understood the term. Is this a one-year agreement that has an automatic renewal? Am I understanding that correctly?
I think that's correct. I actually have to get back to it.
And then is there, is that a, is that an indefinite automatic renewal until there's, there's termination provisions? But there's, there's not a, there's not a, a kind of a final end period? I just wanted to confirm that. And while, while you're looking for that, I guess, was curious on and, and I was maybe looking for some additional language, given that I know that there were some concerns going into this contract or maybe some concerns around the overall transition. I just wanted to focus in on the statement of work that's provided in Exhibit A, it's on page 69 of the packet. Just thought some, thought some staff on the level of detail here versus what we've received in the past. Are we getting comparable services or has there been any changes from what we've typically received from the North contract?
Your Honor, counsel, I can speak to the term question and then defer, of course, to staff for Exhibit A. You have read the contract correctly. It is set up to automatically renew on an annual basis. However, both within the term provision and the termination provisions, either, either side can end this on three months' notice without giving any reason for it.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer your question, Mayor Bain, there's actually more services provided with this agreement than with our last one. And, of course, quickly, the continuing education, the equipment that is utilized out on the field that is being restocked for our patrol is another one. Those are two that jump out at me right now, anyway.
Okay. And then, do you, I don't know if this is something that would typically be spelled out in the contract or not. Maybe it's more informally managed, but what, do we get reporting, any metrics or any reporting that is received from time to time that helps you to monitor quality, just on a more data-centered rather than kind of anecdotal what you're seeing, you know, in the field and through interactions? Do you receive anything like that, that you could, you know, use to kind of monitor success as this is transitioning both from what we've experienced with North to what the new service might be?
Yeah, so with this agreement, we will be getting quarterly updates in regards to the calls for service and the assistance that they're assisting with us and the calls for service that they are responding to, which is something new as well. We have gotten data from the old ambulance services, but from what I understand and in speaking with others that have utilized health, they're really happy with the data that they're getting and they've actually showed us some of that data and what they are going to be providing to us.
That's helpful, thank you. I don't have other questions. Council, other questions of staff? I will entertain a motion. And the resolution for this evening on this item is on page 70 in your packet.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 05112002, approving the medical services agreement between Health East and the city of Forest Lake.
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion. There is a motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please? Actually, before we vote, any, I'm a part of you for just a second. Does any other comments, questions, discussion before we vote? Okay, Karen, go ahead.
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
Mayor Bain?
Hi. Thank you. This is an important one. Okay, our next agenda item this evening is item 7B, Resolution 05112003, which is the extension of the emergency declaration. Peter, do you want to walk us through this?
Yes, ma'am. Your Honor, counsel, the state of emergency that we've been living on, under in Minnesota, now going on a couple of months, has, has a few layers to it and I'd like to step back for just a moment and be clear. The governor issued a state of emergency and in pursuit to that authority triggered by his state of emergency, he's issued a number of executive orders that regulate our lives here in Minnesota. That's all coming from the state government. The local declaration of emergency, which this council has adopted, which the mayor declared the council consented to, has, has a little bit of a different purpose or function. It gives us tools. So the, the executive orders from the government impose some restrictions on our lives as necessary for now. Our emergency declaration gives us tools to react to the scenario, including the rules that the governor has imposed upon us, such as social distancing, no gatherings larger than, than 10, which have an obvious and immediate effect on the way local governments would otherwise operate. And so the current declaration of emergency, our local one, expires in a couple of days. And the resolution before you tonight would consent to its continuance through June 12, which would give you a chance to check back in two more meetings to see whether or not it's time to end this or to extend it. And there's not magic to this. If the council would like to have a discussion about whether or not you want to wait another meeting or two meetings to revisit, that's also something that is completely within your discretion. But to remind you more specifically of what's in the original emergency declaration, because it's incorporated by reference in this resolution, and I suspect I should have attached to my memo, so you had it in front of you, I apologize for that. It has seven paragraphs. The first is simply the declaration of emergency. The second directs the staff to review the ordinance and regulatory requirements or operations, everything that the city is doing itself in its ordinary functions, to make recommendations regarding what else we should do, how we should suspend some things that we're doing, how we might change things. As you know, City Hall operates a little differently now than it would under normal circumstances. This is authority for that. Second, the city departments and staff all need to support of the functions of the emergency management director as he guides us through what we can and should be doing to navigate. Next paragraph allows us to take advantage of whatever funding mechanisms might be open to us because of the state of emergency and puts the emergency management director at the, as the point person for finding out what we can do there and to the extent there is something. Next, the emergency declaration includes within it the authority for these virtual meetings. As a matter of law, the emergency declaration is a predicate for, is a good basis for holding emergency meetings. Also, as a matter of law, these could be called by either the mayor, the city administrator, or the city attorney without the need for this full council action, but because we had this whole emergency declaration regime out there together, I thought it would be good for us all to be on the same page and have everything together. And so you can discuss it if there are concerns, but until the mayor, I'm sorry, the governor lists some of the current restrictions, I don't believe it's prudent or practical for council meetings to be taking place in chambers and returning to business as usual. And so this declaration continues the remote meeting protocols. The, the, the last two elements of the original emergency declaration issued by the mayor called for the emergency meeting for the council to consent to that declaration and allow it to continue for more than three days and requires it, as this current declaration does, to be publicized. That is the long and short of what the emergency declaration is. What we are asking council to do now is extend it for a period of time so that the council can revisit in meeting after next.
Very good. Thank you, Peter. Any questions for Peter on the extension of the emergency declaration? I guess maybe I would ask either Chief Peterson or Captain Weiss to weigh in on their perspective, since one of the provisions is the establishment of that emergency management director position. Just your thoughts on continued need for the foreseeable, well, I guess, for the next four weeks here as we are looking for a four-week extension. Your thoughts?
I think it's very important that we extend that so that way the emergency management can continue to do their jobs. Every day, there's something else happening with this COVID-19 and it would be very prudent to have that in place.
I would agree, Mayor. Counsel, I think it just makes sense to, to extend what the state is, where the state is at to anticipate where they're going in the very near future here.
That's been, councilmember Beistrum?
So I would, I think Captain Weiss may have answered this question. So we're just, are we trying to anticipate where the state is going with this? I'm just curious as to why we chose June 12. I mean, it feels like kind of an arbitrary date for me. So I'm just curious as to why we chose June 12. We know the governor's going to be talking to us again here in a couple of days. So I'm just curious as to why we made the decision to go that far out and not wait for, not wait to see what the state was doing so that we were in alignment with the governor's order.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think I know the answer, but go ahead.
Your Honor, counsel, the reason for the, the June 12 date is because, well, first of all, in the, in the resolution that I've presented to you, you can terminate this at any time by further resolution. So you're not locked in to four weeks. If at your next meeting you find we've had some really good news and let's get on with it. But the governor has made clear that he is issuing his emergency declarations, which is the substantive basis for him to issue all these regulations upon the state in 30-day increments. The current one is going to expire before the current stay-in-place order expires, which pretty much leads to the conclusion, which is not rocket science, that he's going to extend it again. And, and we expect it to be 30 days. And we expect him to be, of course, no one has a crystal ball, but him to be pretty slow in releasing some of the restrictions that affect the kind of human interactions that take place at City Hall and in council chambers.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, if you don't mind.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, go ahead, councilmember Husnick?
Yeah, you know, this, this resolution does give us some options and, you know, as Peter explained and so, you know, some, some miracle comes along you know, some, some miracle comes along and we can cut it off shorter, great. Otherwise, I think we really need to do this, and therefore I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution zero five dash one one dash two zero dash zero three, the extension of the emergency declaration.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll just chime in quickly to say I agree. And should conditions change and we're able to lift sooner, that's great. However, remote meetings, emergency management director position, funding access, as those funding, as those replacement funds are available, I think are all important, and so this allows us to keep those options open. Karen, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Mayor Bain.
Hi. Motion carries. Item seven C this evening is the eighth hardware invoices. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the eighth hardware invoices.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Abstain.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Mayor Bain.
Hi. Motion carries. That ends our action agenda this evening. We do have two items in our discussion-only portion. Just for clarification, we, these are workshop items that we will be discussing, but not expected to take any official action this evening. We've had a fair amount of feedback. We've heard some feedback tonight in open forum. We've heard previous comments in open forum. And both of these topics have had a fair amount of volume in staff email and requests and council conversations, and so I thought it was an opportunity for us to align and just see where council thoughts were on these particular topics and get some information from staff and then to be able to provide additional direction to staff as we deem necessary on each of these items. The first item is eight A. I wanted to talk about our current code as it relates to roosters. And Donovan, I believe you've put together a staff memo on this.
That's correct.
Are you walking us through this, walking us through this this evening?
Certainly. Mayor, members of council, I have prepared a staff memo that outlines the basic, you know, city code and zoning code require standards for keeping of chickens. I don't, though, you know, I can, I can answer questions. I can walk through everything. I thought probably best to let council, you know, lead the discussion with questions related to the code or, you know, the specific complaint. But first, I just want to say that I did a little more research and that these, the keeping of chickens, certificate of compliance was adopted in 2013. And then also that with the Dunrood's situation, I, I have not referred to that as a personal issue because there is a city code nuisance provision that they accurately refer to in their open forum letter that, that could potentially apply here. And also, the, the city code, the zoning code is silent on, on where's roosters, livestock can be kept on smaller acreages within the, within the zoning code, within a rural residential zoning district. And and currently, the, the, there are, what I'm, what I'm seeing is that the property is meeting the basic coop setback and number of chickens for that the area, and basically, it's, the zoning code doesn't provide any relief, unfortunately for the Dunrood's, though, certainly have sympathy for their situation. And also, something I didn't include in the memo is I just did the calculation, and basically, the rural residential zoning district comprises about nineteen percent of the city's land area. So it's about fifty-three hundred acres of prop, of land. So it's any, any, you know, change in the zoning text for that zoning district does, does impact many properties. With that, I'd like, I'm open to and happy to answer any questions of council.
Donovan, just, why don't we just kind of quickly summarize that this particular complaint, to get this one out of the way, they're in compliance with what the current zoning ordinances are. They have over a seven-acre property. If you look at the staff memo, the chicken coop is two, minimum, two hundred and fifty to two sixty-five from two neighbors and four hundred and seventy feet away from another neighbors. And they are the people who have the roosters are in compliance with current standards, correct?
That is correct. But just the one, with the one caveat that even if the property was under five acres, they could have, they could have chickens within this zoning district.
Yeah, but, yeah, and we're talking about a rooster, so I think that's the important part.
Or roosters. Yeah, they could have livestock, which does include roosters.
So, so parcels greater than five acres are allowed roosters? Is that the, is that the determining factor?
No, it's, it's, the determining, determining factor is the properties in rural residential zoning district.
In rural residential, and rural residential, rural residential can have roosters regardless of acreage?
Correct. Yeah, so looking at the, this section of code is, this is, in the, the general use standards, livestock may be allowed in the conservancy, agriculture, and rural residential districts. So that's just as a permitted use. And then there are a series of standards. You know, how many you can have based on the one-horse animal unit standard, or two grazable acres for each animal unit, and then the setbacks, a hundred feet from property line, fifty feet from the well of the, the owner's property, two hundred feet from residential, adjacent residential structure well, and then two hundred feet from, you know, year-end service water. So as long as these standards are met, the, the owner can keep their livestock, which, you know, which is a full list of things, full list, least of, you know, mammals and birds, you know, general, you know, domestic farm animals. Of course, not exotic animals, and that's the situation we're dealing with. The, um, the, in contrast, the, the the keeping of chickens, which is the more recently passed provision for, you know, single-family residential districts, well, basically all others, so we're not putting chickens in commercial or industrial zoning districts. And what's here, what's, I think, is a little confusing, is the keeping of domestic chickens is permitted on single-family residential properties less than five acres, and within our residential zoning district, subject to the following conditions, requirements. So, so that means you can have your chickens within all the MXR one, two, three, can have it within multiple family zoning districts, because that principal use of the property shall be single-family residential. But where this, you know, the, within all zoning districts, residential zoning districts, where that, where that may, may create some confusion is that there are many properties within the agriculture zoning district where they are much larger, they aren't, they aren't five acres, or else maybe just the homeowner wants to have a coop and not comply with the, say, the hundred-foot setback from the property line. I actually just recently had a a, sorry. A situation where, sorry, I am lost my screen. Oh, come on. Um. Where'd it go? Um. Lost my screen share, frame.
We're still seeing, we're still seeing part of that Word document.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, why don't we just go on and have that discussion?
Can, can you confirm, Donovan, while you're, while you're fixing that, though, down below, you had a grid that showed all sorts of animals. So beyond just a rooster, we, those are all animals that are also allowed in that, so was turkeys and horse, I mean, there was a host of animals. Is that all with, also allowed within that rural residential zoning district?
That is correct.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Absolutely.
Donovan, so in reading, I read your memo, and reading it and what you stated, it sounds like the resident with the rooster is within the ordinance. And you also said, and, and that if that was changed, it would affect a lot of other properties who are also keeping different sorts of animals. My question is, you talked about the, um, the nuisance ordinance that could also play a role. What, how would that be enforced, or what, would that be like someone calling because their dog is barking, or then the police have to deal with it? I'm just curious how that works.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I've spoken with the Dunroods about this. Once I determined that the zoning code was, was not going to provide any relief to them, basically, it's a nine-one-one call to the police department. A responding officer can go there, and if he believes it, it's a violation of that ninety-six point oh four, the news, noise nuisance ordinance, he could write a misdemeanor citation for that. Of course, then that goes to criminal court, and then there's, you know, it would take a actual, you know, judge to agree with that, to actually create a fine or some, you know, find violation and, and find the, the rooster owner because they were in violation of that, that, that noise ordinance.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very difficult level to try to prove that that's a nuisance. And I would hate to put the police officer in that position. I'm not sure they can make that determination from just a rooster growing when they pull into the driveway. And the, the, the the odds of a judge even not laughing us out of court properly, but finding anybody guilty would probably is pretty far, far-fetched at this point.
No, I agree, and I, I'd rather police be responding to real emergencies than, than roosters growing. Okay, that was, that was my question.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. That doesn't seem, that seems to be a, a poor use of our, our police resources. I noted in the ordinance, and I, I wish we could get it back up, Donovan, that it, it's, it, it says that at some level, roosters are not allowed. Right? At some acreage level or below, roosters are not allowed.
In, um, not in this zoning district. It's, it's really the, the dominant piece is the, is the, is the zoning district that's in, in place here. So you could, you know, but, I mean, if it was the way the standards read, you know, if it's less than, yeah, it's, it's, shall be placed on us, yeah, I mean, your, your saying is correct, I'm sorry. No livestock should be placed on any site less than five acres.
Okay. So is there, I, I mean, for me, clearly, this is a quality of life issue, and it's going, it's been going on and on and on and on and on, and I don't think they have a complaint about any other animal on that property. And I'm, I'm just, I, I mean, the right to, right to house a rooster versus a right to a peaceful existence, if I come, if I, if I, if I'm looking at one versus the other, I tend to, tend to tip toward the right to a peaceful existence. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to take a look at that rooster acreage. I mean, I'm not sure at what point the rooster becomes a non-nuance acreage-wise, but I, I mean, I, I'm wondering if that's a direction, you know?
And I would hesitate to, I mean, it's pretty arbitrary what we're going to make. Is it five acres, four acres, three acres, two acres? And are we specifying this out for an exception? But that's, that's for maybe Pete to talk about. I, I don't know how you pick what the acreage is for a rooster or not.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know if there, there's any rooster research.
Because of the zoning allows it, I mean, it's a, it's, it's allowed in the zoning based, based on the size of the property and, and its location. And in this particular case, I don't know why this rooster is abundantly allowed, but the, the distances here are pretty substantial between neighbors, so.
And the Dunrood's did, if I remember correctly, from the open forum letter that Dan read, they did talk with the neighbor. They did have it, they did have a discussion. And assuming that didn't go very far, if this is where we're at.
Correct.
Yeah.
Neighbor, maybe, I'll go ahead. I was just gonna say, I think the neighbor maybe has something to prove. I don't know. That's kind of what I'm hearing here. The only thing I can tell you is that as a kid, I grew up with roosters and chickens. My grandpa raised them by the thousands. And I guess when you're a farm kid, you kind of get used to it, but I can see where it'd be a real earken in a residential area, and it's just too bad that there can't come to some resolution, because it's gonna be pretty tough to, to, uh, to enforce any kind of change there. You know, especially with the zoning in place. How, how would you do that, you know? So it's really a sad situation, I think, because just how important is that rooster, where there can't be some kind of a compromise between the two neighbors, you know? It's just my take on it.
Well, I can offer, I did, I did, I'm sorry. I can, I can offer, I did, yeah. I'm sorry. I can offer that. I did speak to the rooster owner last spring, and he, he said that if, you know, you know, that if there was a petition of, you know, all kinds of other surrounding neighbors, you know, also objecting to the rooster, that he'd be willing to take some action. At the time, I think the Dunrood's were just asking for one rooster to be removed, like, they were thinking that it's only been more recent that this noise has gotten, you know, has increased. But I don't think that's happened, or I don't know, you know, I haven't heard anything later, you know, any update on that. And this was, you know, spring of 2019 when I spoke to him.
Can somebody speak to grandfather provision? So even if we were to change the law or change the zoning code here, there's typically a grandfather provision, and something like this, can someone kind of walk us through what would be a customary? I just want to make sure we're setting expectations around what we can and can't change related to this particular scenario?
Yes. Certainly, there is, within the zoning code, there's rules for non-conformities of structures and uses. And a use may be, continue, once it's made non-conforming, like a change in law, that it can continue with no expansion until, for some reason, if it's discontinued for a year or more, it can't be reestablished. So in this case, it, we change the code as long as we don't get, say, three roosters out there, maybe, or more chick, you know, then they could continue as, as long as they, the roosters, the rooster use is maintained.
I struggle with this one because I, sometimes we look at these and there's just something that's been missed, and in this case, you know, we've got the, you know, we've got the minimum, minimum lot sizes, we've got a very detailed list of which, which types of animals are allowed, and it's, it's much beyond just a rooster. I mean, there's a whole host of what can be noisy, noisy livestock on that list. Yes, the numbers are limited. And then we've also got, you know, distance provisions, and it's a pretty well thought out, doesn't fit this particular challenge, but it's a pretty thorough area of our code, but I just can't look to a section and think, well, we've missed it here, and here's what we need to fix. This is really a change in how we have a fair number of This is really a change in how we have a fair number of property owners use their property and to change, you know, to change it here when, again, there's a whole host of animals that might potentially be noisy on that list. Um, if that's the standard, we could be, you know, we could be substantially changing what that rural code looks like. You know, if every time we have a complaint, we're, you know, checking another animal off the list. It's, it, there just isn't the, I thought maybe when we looked into this, we'd find the, you know, the glaring hole. Well, it's fixed and it's done. And I'm just not, I'm just not seeing that. And that's challenging of then kind of more from an overall, take this circumstance off the table. It's now an overall policy decision. And we have a lot of residents that love the rural character of those neighborhoods. And livestock is part of that, everything that comes with livestock. So I'm, I'm challenged to say that there's a broader policy concern here that is, you know, unaddressed or should be changed in our code. Completely sympathetic to the, you know, the, the particular property owners and, you know, they want a peaceful enjoyment of their deck. And I appreciate it and, um, but I, I, I think to head down that path is a broader, a broader change than just one rooster.
And Mayor.
Councilmember George.
I, I, I concur with you. This, to me is, um, I, I think our current zoning is quite good in this area. And I, I don't see a change. And I think we end up with this quite often. In this case, it might be a little bit more of the rural dream versus the rural reality. And a little bit of the city and, you know, like encroaching. It's, it's a little like the airport. Those, you know, the people living near the airport don't want more planes. The freeway doesn't want more cars. It's, it comes with the growth of the city. I am sympathetic with it, but I don't, I don't see a, a clear way that we can change anything to get to where everyone would want to be.
I think the difference here is you have, like, you have a persistent and constant noise issue for them around the clock. That is severely impacting their quality of life. I think that's the difference. A plane flies over, you know, the plane noise goes away, the plane lands. You know, cars settle down at night. I've noticed growth in traffic along ninety seven here and increases in noise, but it settles down at night. And I understand that. I think you have a, I think we have a persistent issue here for them. And it, and it, it literally is around the clock. So what are, what would be the, what are the? So if we're at the five acre level, and Donovan, you might not be able to answer this question for me right off the top of your head. So what kind of a, what kind of a property line, you know, what kind of a distance would we have at that five acre level? I mean, and, and I, you know, I, I, I clearly understand what you guys are saying. I really do. This is a little bit of a slippery slope and I get it. But some animals are noisier than others. And in this particular case, roosters tend to be pretty noisy. So.
Yeah, unfortunately though, what is Donovan said earlier, if we change the, the zoning ordinance and make it, let's just say for discussion, two acres, the rooster's still grandfathered in and the rooster can be there and the next rooster that replaces it can be there and the rooster after that. So it's not solving the initial problem that we're having with, with the noisy rooster.
Have the Dunroods, I know Donovan, you spoke to the rooster owning neighbor who said they would entertain a petition from other neighbors. Do we know if the Dunroods have talked to other neighbors or?
I believe so. Um, and I think maybe, I, I don't know the result of that. You know, it, because I, I, it was the, the complaint came in last spring and I tried to do what I could with it. Really found out there weren't any avenues I could pursue in the zoning code. Um, and I haven't, I haven't filed up since then.
Is it, is it true that you've been contacted by other neighbors, Donovan?
No, I, I have not.
Council, anything further we should, um, ask staff to review? Any? I, actually, I do have a process question. So, you know, this has gotten a fair amount of council attention. Just in email volume and I know there's been staff requests. And, um, so I, I tossed it on as a discussion item. Change of this nature, would that typically go to planning commission? I recognize, and I don't mean any disrespect to the planning commission on, you know, chopping them out. I wanted to just get some council, council feedback initially, but would we typically send this back to planning commission if we were to do something?
Yes, I believe we would.
Yes.
Is it worth, um, is it worth gathering, you know, planning commission input, thoughts? I, I, um, I just, I, I, I don't see that this is, um, I'm not sure I see a path towards a, a change. However, I, I, I don't want to have done an end around planning commission and their, their expertise is valuable and their input is valuable. And so if we thought that, if staff thought that this should have planning commission attention, I'm happy to, happy to have them take a look at it. Councilmember George, what are your thoughts here as you think about us weighing in on this and on a kind of a planning commission item?
You know, I, I think they would be happy to weigh in if they're always happy to give their opinion. Um, and they usually have no lack of. But I, but I don't see much of a change. Definitely have a discussion with them. I believe Donovan, we Wednesday night, we can have it as a, end of meeting. Quick discussion so we could bring something back to you within a couple of weeks there and just see if we're way off or if we're all on page.
I'm certainly willing to. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'm certainly, we do have a planning commission meeting this coming Wednesday, May thirteenth. I'm willing to request the chair that we amend the agenda to add as a discussion item at, at the end of the meeting.
I'd be interested in their thoughts. They've got deep expertise and, you know, they, they hear things we don't hear and they have a, um, a history. And I'd be interested in their thoughts. Um, if there's something that we are missing or need to consider, I'm happy to entertain it. And if they are open to taking it up, I'd like to hear their thoughts.
Certainly.
Is, is there a, is there a precedence in other communities? I mean, is there a, is there a, um, is there a way to do a comparable, take a comparable look at ordinances? You know, rooster related, I guess, to see where we, where we land with that acreage?
Certainly, I can do that research. Um, and, you know, we, we do kind of among the different planners, different city staff, get inquiries. I got an inquiry recently that, you know, had me actually compile all those certificate of compliances that the city has issued, you know, since twenty thirteen, just, you know, reason, for the reason that another, another planner on another city was, was looking for best practices. Um, I certainly can take a look on the, on the acreage. See if there is other exceptions or, you know, other solutions that other cities have come up with.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll just, I'll just chime in. Anecdotally, there's a thread on the mayor forum about roosters. Um, actually, there's a thread about chickens in general and about half allow roosters and half have, it's like disallow roosters now. That's just an overall kind of a high level, high level comment thread. We're not getting into the details of what's allowed by zoning district. But there are, it's, it's about fifty fifty. Anything else? Questions, clarifications? Sounds like we'll see if planning commission is open to putting this on as a discussion item and hear back from them. Thank you, everybody. All right, our next agenda item this evening, discussion also on eight B, which is the Everton Avenue Everton Trail stop sign request. Um, I put this on tonight as a kind of a suggestion. There's certainly an active conversation about a particular intersection. But council and staff, we see these requests from time to time. And I know that this is the, maybe the, maybe time to refresh, opportunity to refresh council on how these decisions are made. What's the criteria when we decide what is just a crosswalk and when there's signage placed? Because certainly there's precedent and, you know, and, um, there's, you know, if we're, this isn't well managed. It's an opportunity where we end up with a request for four-way stops at every single intersection, which isn't what we want. So I thought it was a good opportunity for staff to weigh in on the guidance that they use on making these determinations. And then certainly opportunity for us to, um, ask questions and decide if there's a overall policy change to consider or if there is maybe just a, a unique circumstance with this one that we wanted to see go a different direction. So, um, I'm not sure who from staff is starting us off.
Well, I think we should, I mean, I, I think we should start off by knowing that you have a request for the stop sign. And Ryan should, and maybe Dave should talk about what, what requirements need to be met regularly on, on, on an everyday basis of what needs a stop sign, what doesn't. And often when you, it's been my experience, when you have stop sign requests, it's really, the stop sign isn't more, it's an, it's an enforcement issue more than it is a, a traffic control issue. But I will turn that to the experts that know much more than I do.
Mayor, City Council, Ryan Goodman, City Engineer, can you hear me? So.
Speak up a little bit. There you go. Good.
All right, I'll kind of just go through different parts on what we put into making the decision on signage control, speed limits, and kind of all the things related. So this is not uncommon. We get a lot of these requests through the summer. And this particular road, we've had one, two, three, four, five separate intersections of requests for traffic control change or reduction in speed limit. So it's a lot of stuff that we discuss upfront with the police department and public works and engineering and kind of work through our process that we, we have to determine whether a change is warranted. A lot of thought with safety, compliance and enforcement ability goes into all that. I'm just gonna read some information that I have jotted down here just to get you some background. And then we'll kind of go into more of the, the, this particular section, some data that we actually have. And I'll compare it to regional data that we have and then kind of where we're at with the termination on some stuff here. So what I'm gonna outline here is the following stop sign guidance comes from the manual uniform traffic control devices of the MUTCD, which I'll refer to quite often here tonight. When warranted, stop signs effectively and efficiently control traffic. However, studies suggest that unwarranted stop signs can do more harm than good. That's often a lot of concerns police, public works and engineering all have. If we oversign something, who's going to follow what's out there if it's not really controlling situation that they were meant to be controlling? Effects of unwarranted stop signs, compliance with unwarranted stop signs is very poor. This is based upon drivers feeling little reason to yield the right of way because there are usually no vehicles on approaching, approaching street. As a result, traffic pedestrian accidents are increased. Vehicle speeds between stop signs increased. Vehicle speeds between stop signs, sorry, increase, uh, create unnecessary delays for drivers. Noise and air pollution are increased due to unnecessary braking and accelerating. The MUTCD lays out specific guidelines on how and when a stop sign should be installed and used. Stop sign can be considered through judgments in one or more of the following bullet points. Intersection of less importance road with main road with application of the normal right of way rule would not be expected to provide reasonable compliance with the law. Streets entering a through highway or street, unsignalized intersections in a signalized area, crash records indicate a need for control by the stop sign. Stop signs should be installed in a manner that minimizes the number of vehicles to stop. Decisions regarding the appropriate street to stop should be made based on engineering judgment. In most cases, streets carrying the lowest volume of traffic should be stopped. The MUTCD states that stop signs should not only, should not be used for speed control. There is no real evidence to indicate that stop signs decrease the speed of traffic. Traffic studies have shown that when stop signs have been installed for the purpose of controlling the speed of vehicles, rather than to reduce the likelihood of the vehicle conflicts at an intersection, intersecting roads, the vehicle speeds between the installations typically increase over what they were prior to the signs being erected. The institution of transportation engineering has collected information regarding stop signs reducing the amount of traffic coming through a neighborhood. Overall, traffic volumes did not change. Drivers will find the best and most efficient route for the, for a commute. Stop signs could lead to traffic being pushed to adjacent streets through the same neighborhood. Some of the, what we've been doing out here from now, the technical side of everything is we've collected data from three years, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and just twenty stuff got submitted today. Uh, and on that, it breaks it down into separate speed categories. Because now we're dealing with, is it a perception of speed or do we have real speeding going through this area? The section of roadway we're talking about is Everton Avenue from basically Quick Trip down to two hundred Second Streets North. There's no current stop signs on Everton Avenue. And we've had multiple requests through there. Uh, and then we've also had multiple requests and concerns about speeding. So this is where then the police department deployed the mobile traffic units and we started collecting stuff in June of two thousand eighteen and July of eighteen. Both of those data collections support exactly what the speed limits posted at eighty five percentile is, you know, what you would take is how we would set speed limits on a, through a speed study. And those came in at thirty two and thirty one. So you would obviously set the speed limit at thirty. So we're in compliance with what's out there today. Yeah, you, you got the one out of almost sixteen hundred drivers that went forty and over. And you had a group, you know, within the mid thirties. So our categories on all our speed stuff that comes out of the trailer are zero, one miles an hour to nineteen, and then it's in two miles per hour increments up to forty and above on the thirty mile an hour roadways. But the eighty five percentile is traveling in two thousand eighteen, thirty two and below. So you would set it at thirty. So right there, that data proves the perception of speed. It was a perception versus a fact. Nineteen. We again did data collection in May of two thousand nineteen and June of two thousand nineteen. However, the one that jumps out of the eighty five percentile here is a little further up Everton, which was up by Everton Way, which is the townhomes across the street from Summerfield Park area. All the other data is down by two hundred and six in Everton. So in May of nineteen, we come in with the eighty five percentile again at thirty one. And that other one I was talking about, little photo of the road where there's no driveways. That was, uh, June of nineteen, eighty five percentile came at thirty five. So you still really would probably set the road at miles per hour at thirty. We did send a unit back out there again here in May of, of this year, uh, both on the eighth and tenth. And both those, on the eighth, the eighty five percentile was thirty two. And eighty five percentile was thirty one. So again, appropriately, the speed set where it's at. I mean, these categories, you got one miles an hour to nineteen, significant amount of cars in that category. But then you got the, you know, the one out of nine hundred here that's up in the forties. So what else do we look at? Uh, you know, we got our speed, but then there's also a lot of the, or decisions made on overall traffic, ADA, annual daily traffic. So we do traffic counts in Forest Lake and our state. So we do traffic counts in Forest Lake and our state aid routes every four years. Everton Avenue North is a state aid route and also two hundred and sixth street between Everton and Fenway is a state aid route as well. You can find different numbers of traffic you want all over the place. The lowest one I could find is actually in a city policy where they obviously overwrote something and made it more conservative for the city and they went down, you know, if traffic control volumes exceed five hundred vehicles per day on each of the intersecting streets, stop signs should be considered. Everton Avenue from this section of two hundred and second up to Highway ninety-seven, the most vehicles we have coming from an adjacent street into that intersection is four oh five. So we're off there. Uh, a lot of the stuff that's outlined in the M U T C D, the, the manual that's often followed, we're talking two thousand units per day, so we're well off that. The five hundred I found was in another city's policy. So at the end of the day, we, we bring all those facts together and we make a decision. All right, if we install signs, is it going to change? Well, based off what I've told you from studies and manuals and the traffic data, we don't believe it would change. Uh, and then if you are going to install this and you're not going to get compliance, does that make a situation more dangerous? It potentially does, according to the studies that we just talked about and outlined. And then at the end of the day, we're still probably going to get the complaints. And then how does the police department effectively um, deal with those? Um, you know, we can't have an officer sit on one section of roadway in the city and we have a hundred of these, you know, that's just what we gets and you know, that speed trailer we try to deploy as much as we possibly can. This area though, obviously does not meet ADA standards and that was identified in your ADA transition plan, but that's just because of the error of the construction, none of those, none of the stuff in this area meets ADA compliance. So when we come through with our street projects, we are able to address all that then. So just changing signage now doesn't always mean the quick, easy fix because you got sidewalks that are not compliant, the sidewalks aren't at the right angle. So you have a lot of other stuff. And what intersection do you focus on in this section? We've, you know, have had requests of changes. We want the stop sign at this intersection, one, two, three, four, five different spots. Do you put five full stopways along Everton Avenue? Uh, it, you know, there's one that makes the most sense. It doesn't meet any of the thresholds and the stuff that we just talked about. But if you're going to focus that on a, a full intersection stop sign, you're, you really should be looking at also extending sidewalks and bringing pedestrians up to those improved intersections. There's also some other stuff going in this area on Everton Avenue between two hundred and sixth street north and two hundred and second street. It's one of the areas and one of the few areas that has boulevard trees and landscaping within in Forest Lake. We no longer allow boulevard trees within the right of way because there are some sight distances, site, site distance issues. And for the people that haven't taken care of the trees uh, and trimmed them up, you know, they, they got some low hanging branches that, you know, there's some quick, easy things that could be taken care of, uh, but and if you got cars parked on one side or another, it doesn't matter if you'd have trees there or not, there was going to provide site issues as well. So that's why it's very difficult for us just to say yes to a request when we consider all those things that we talked about, knowing that the, it's ultimately more than a few signs and a few dollars in concrete and stuff like that, uh, funnel where the traffic really should go. You know, you got some stuff down here, you can't even explain why they built it back when they did. How one pet ramp comes out at a different intersection down at the south leg Everton Trail North and where are you supposed to go across to somebody's driveway on the east side? So that doesn't, you know, really make sense there. But those are all the things that we put into these requests and reviews and uh, try to use factual this information to make those decisions and it's just the facts aren't there, you know, if we want to do something because we want to try to help a neighbor, you know, that's certainly what's there. I mean, but the traffic is all within eighty-five percentile of the data that we've collected. Our traffic counts are under what would suggest a change in traffic control. And we do those every four years, so we did them in eighteen, our next ones will be in twenty-two. Um, obviously, there's a lot more traffic in neighborhoods right now as I'm even just looking at my window while we're having our meeting here tonight. I never see this many people walking around. And I, it's just, so those are, that's just a summary of all the stuff that goes into all the discussions that we have. And at the end of the day, it's oftentimes how much ability and time and effort does your local police department or sheriff have to enforce these situations? Because signs are only going to do what a penalty comes with it. So, and it's, we just don't have the resources to staff a full time out here on a weekly basis. With that, uh, certainly want to open up for questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Very thorough and helpful. Come to number base, Jim.
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd love a copy of that, Ryan. If you could send that to us, that would be great. I'd be really interested in having that in, in my possession, but um, where is, there is a crosswalk located somewhere along in here, right? Is that true? Is it, is the road marked? Where is that located specifically?
So there's two legs or like a horseshoe loop of Everton Trail North.
Yep.
That comes out to Everton Avenue. It's the north, north leg of that intersection.
Okay. So it's a crosswalk to nowhere, because I'm kind, I'm looking at a map.
That crosswalk comes across the road to, uh, I believe it's an eight foot by two minutes trail that's on the east side of Everton Avenue. On the south, on the south leg of Everton Trail North, it shoots you out to the intersection.
Okay.
There's no signage, there's no markings, and if you walk from the pet ramp across the road, you're right in somebody's driveway.
Okay. So is there, is there anything there now? I know the resident mentioned signage and Dan had made a suggestion about changing signage to green. Um, are there things that can be done in that area to kind of draw attention to it being a pedestrian area as well? I mean, I, I guess what I'm asking is, is there, are there things that can be done? You know, and what might they be?
You can always add signs or striping. It's just, when do you stop? We have a lot of other areas that have higher traffic levels and higher pedestrian use that probably on a scale should have those amenities installed first. You know, it all comes back to funding, right? So as we come through with our road projects, instead of doing pieces to a, a part, we thoroughly review all the signage and current standards, our ADA transition plan now and redo the stuff. So even the pet ramps out here, none of them meet ADA compliance. They don't have the appropriate slopes, the landing, the right truncated domes, the right signage, the retroflectivity of signs. You know, but when we come through with the street project, we would address all that.
Ryan, what is that scheduled for that leg roughly?
So we're pretty solid on our three-year plan based on the bonding stuff. There are some obviously roads that are creeping up that probably, well, they need to be done now, but they're not in the three-year plan, just again, because of funding. This area is relatively average road rating compared to a lot of roads that are worse. So I don't, with current funding, I don't foresee this section of road within even the five-year C I P unless we're directed off the right, or, you know, to deal with this road.
About the quality of striping, um, one of the things I've been noticing is that there's, there's sections where you can, at one time, there was a pedestrian, there was pedestrian striping. If anyone noticed recently what the quality of that pedestrian striping is?
They're, uh, they're probably worn off some, but we paint them once a year, so seasonals are starting right now, so that, that painting will happen. Probably June, June-ish, so, and just to touch back on Ryan, Summerfield, the signage is going to get redone in Summerfield next year. So we're doing uh, east of Goodview and then up, up north of Lake this year, and then Summerfield will get all re-signed next year. So if there is some typically that, when we do that, the crosswalks will get turned to the, the green, yellow, neon and and the with arrows and all that, the bigger thirty-six inch size crosswalks too, so that will be on for next year. We just have to, can we do so many a year with the budget we're allowed, so?
So what public works is referring to there is they'll jump ahead on some roads that's, we don't have scheduled in the C I P for a str, a street project. Uh, because really where we're talking about this crossing, the best thing to do would be to extend the sidewalk up the west side of Everton and have everybody cross at the intersection of two oh six streets in Everton. There, they would have access to the trail and then the park is right there. And you know, other things to consider is how restrictive do you want to be with the public roadway? Do you want to post no parking along Everton Avenue? You know, that obviously would improve site distance if vehicles aren't parked along it, but then you got neighbors that their only parking for visitors is their driveway and the road frontage. Do you post on one side?
Is that the only, yeah, is that the only parking option for that park for Summerfield? If someone's having an event at Summerfield is, is it, or is there, does Summerfield have its own parking area?
It does not.
Yeah, it's a little tough to have a, I mean, it's a huge park, right? So, and it's got some nice amenities, tough to have that amenities and not have some parking facility on street.
Currently, I believe most people that have traveled to this park by vehicle will park on two hundred and sixth street because they're the closest walking distance to playground equipment.
Yeah.
They use Falcon quite a bit too. That's the side street that kicks out there and there's a sidewalk that ties in with the bike trail. So that's a pretty wide street there that it's used on both sides of the road.
Right. So are they able to park on both sides of the road there? Along Everton would, would only allowing, would only, would parking on just one side of the road be helpful?
Creates a uniformity along a corridor. Uh, you know, obviously if cars parked on both sides of the road, you cannot maintain two-way traffic. That's just your road standard, you know, out. Other than on main road collectors, like, you know, Fenway where we don't allow parking or yeah, parking, you know, you're, you're wider there, but you know, like, these are your standard subdivision roads. Otherwise, the builder just, or the developer couldn't afford to do what they used to do back in the old days, you know, with the forty-plus foot road. These, these are about thirty-four feet back to back. So if everybody was parked on one side, you know, it's easier for everybody to identify where the conflicts are, but you're still going to provide site distance issues if you parked up the whole entire road.
So, so do we?
Other questions from staff, go ahead.
Do we take composition of a neighborhood into consideration when we make these decisions?
We have a lot of requests, you know, that are submitted online or through email. But it, we really do our independently review, you know, try to go back to the facts as much as possible. And that's why we deploy this speed trailer, look at existing traffic counts to try to determine whether it's a perception issue or a reality and what's the best way to address this? Does it need immediate attention or is it in within the short C I P? Or do the facts just not support it? It, it's just, there are so many requests like this to the city. And I think we spend a lot of time and obviously, last thing anybody wants is the safety issue. But it's also, if you flood a boulevard with signs or like we talked about with the studies say, do you increase risk the other way? More signs on the boulevard to reduce site distance, more maintenance, more uh, sign replacements. Um, so that now public works has more things to deal with, but then if the signs aren't being followed or um, you now then deploy your police department to enforce every sign that you've erected?
Chief and Captain Weiss, are, are there, are there strategies residents can implement in a community like that? I know I've seen slow children at play signs in yards, that sort of thing. I don't know how effective they are.
Yeah, I don't know of any real strategies um, that work like that. Um, you know, we've seen them in, uh, on North Shore Drive, you know, we've got the uh, the electronic speed limit sign there, you know, I think that's a, a good way to remind people of how fast they're going and slowing them down. Um, but in this case, as we've seen with the speed trailer, um, the perception is that people are speeding and we get calls quite often for that area off Everton Avenue North. But with the speed trailer, which actually captures a vehicle's speed before they actually, it is displayed on the trailer, I think it's very accurate that, you know, the majority, like Ryan mentioned, eighty-five percent of them are within that driving within the speed limit. So even something like that, I don't know if it's um, would help. Now with the child that play and, and those types of things, um, I guess I, I don't know of any studies showing that uh, those do work. I mean, they definitely catch my eye when I see them, of course. Um, but unless Captain Weiss, I, I'm assuming you haven't seen any studies that show something like that, or you, Ryan, have you?
Mayor City Council, the M U T C D has actually gone away from signs like that, uh, such as children at play or deaf child area, they've gone away from that as whether somebody's grown up and moved away, then the sign no longer valid, but still always left there. Uh, so it came really basically down to not following the posted signs, just because the scenarios are always changing and I didn't explain that right, or I'm trying to think of why they did that, but they just weren't being followed as the circumstances that they were trying to relate to have changed so much. You know, he, here's a section of road that if there was a street project coming through here, you might look at what they refer to as traffic calming, where we have these pedestrian crosswalks where we narrow the roadway up and you know, make the crossing shorter, but then they make the pedestrian more visible. Uh, you can do that by striping too, instead of moving the curb. Uh, you know, stuff like that, but it's just again, it, you know, it's, the speed is within compliance of the three years worth of data.
I think a good point that Ryan brought up earlier too is you're just gonna, there's a pretty good chance you're going to move traffic flow. So if you, you shut down Everton or you put a stop sign there, people are just gonna take two hundred and second to Fenway or then take infield and go around the other way. So I think people don't want to stop at the stop sign, you're just going to increase flow and then you're just pushing your issue somewhere else. And next thing you know, you're going to have stops on requests at three intersections on infield or another, you know, at Falcon and two hundred second, I think. And if you, you put one up at two hundred and six in Everton, then the next request, well, that's great, but now we want one at infield. And then we want one at infield trail or Everton trail, it's just kind of comes back to the whole easements along the lake. I mean, you, you set a precedent where you put a stop sign and next thing you know, you're going to get constant requests. And while you put one, you put one here and now we're just gonna have stop signs all over the place. You know, and it's, I mean, there's places where they're really warranted, I mean, like last year or the year before, when we put those ones up on South Shore and Eleventh Avenue and then South Shore and Fifteenth Avenue by and then South Shore and Fifteenth Avenue by Saint Peters and Eleventh Street and Fifteenth Avenue. I mean, those, those have a lot of turning, turning patterns where people are taking lefts and rights. And you're having through traffic go through and, you know, going, going in front of somebody taking a left where a lot of those are a lot more safety concerns with accidents, you know, and it's not taking away that, you know, that I don't think there's pedestrian traffic or issues, but you know, putting the stops in there, like what Ryan said with the, the speed, I don't know what you're, how much you're gonna solve by putting that stop sign there other than a crossing. You know, usually if you had a trail on both sides and a sidewalk coming to it where you had heavy pedestrian traffic, yeah, that would, that would make a lot of sense where people are having to stop where people are crossing, but you know. I'm in favor of safety, but I'm also not in favor of putting a stop sign every block either, where it's just becomes a maintenance nightmare. I mean, to put a three-way stop sign up, I mean, just cost-wise is probably five hundred to a thousand dollars by the time you put the signs and the hardware and the staff time and all that. So I mean, and then ongoing maintenance every five to 10 years replacing everything. So that's my opinion. Sometimes stop signs, it's a no-brainer that you need to put one there. And some of them are, if you start putting one somewhere, then you're gonna be putting them every block. And Everton is a, a through street and people use that to get from, through the neighborhood. And we just want traffic to kind of flow through there too.
Thank you, Ryan and Dave. This has been incredibly informative and I know there's a lot that goes into these decisions. Counsel, any further questions of staff on this particular item? I guess, you know, I, I, I think I'll just stop there first before I go on. Any further questions?
And Mayor, I, I don't have a question.
Come number jar, yeah.
It's no question, but I just want to thank Ryan and Dave for the education tonight. A lot more goes into this than I really thought did, so I'm, I'm glad that all this work has been done. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree and I agree with those comments. And if I, you know, I think that, you know, we wanted, I wanted to illustrate for counsel kind of what goes into these decisions. And I guess the change, the question for counsel is, do we want to contemplate a change? Or is there additional work that we would like, um, staff to do? Um, there's, um, you know, certainly this is an il- this example tonight was brought forward as an example. But, you know, we get these requests routinely and actually just today I got another one. And so, you know, we, there is a precedent that's set as well. So it is more than just this one particular circumstance. And, you know, do we want to expand, do additional, you know, a change of some sort? And I guess I struggle with, I, I, I struggle with making that change because I appreciate the, you know, the studies that go in and, you know, using the recommended best practices of not just the city of Forest Lake, but how does, you know, what is good civil engineering, you know, dictate for situations like this? And I think we've got good data points, um, that kind of guide. Um, and also what's obvious is not always obvious and things like, um, you know, unintended consequences. And I, that, those are the things that I hear reflected in the conversation tonight. So I'm, I'm hesitant to make a change, but I also know this council hasn't considered an item of this nature. So I wanted to get other feedback as well.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Counsel Husnick, I, you know, this study that Ryan has done and all the research they've done and everything, this is a situation where unfortunately, I think they, they're making the right decisions here. And, uh, you know, Dave's comments also, they really know what's going on here. And I, and I think as far as I'm concerned, we kind of need to leave it up to those folks to make these decisions for us. So, um, you know, relying on Ryan's comments and even the comments that Dave made, I, I think you're doing a great job and I think they've got it right. So, um, that's my only comment about it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Husnick. Any other thoughts to chime in tonight?
I guess I would just add, I, I understand too, and I, I, I think, I think Dave's statement that, you know, you, you change one thing and then you push it somewhere else, sort of resonated with me a little bit, but I always come back to, you know, if we have a safety issue, what can be done? You know, are there some strategies that we can implement? You know, uh, improving the striping, you know, changing a color of a sign, you know, some simple strategies that we can implement so that we're not, we're not just, you know, looking at cost and work and those sorts of things. We're acknowledging the fact that we have concerns about our citizens and especially our kids from the safety perspective. So I just want to close with that.
You know, just to quickly.
And I too could support. Go ahead, Ryan.
The, the one thing we could do tomorrow, the re- each of the residents in front of their home could trim their tree up four feet. I mean, I got some hang, it looks like in, you know, just street view now, I got some hangers that are would block anything. Just to increase the visibility along there.
That's also good feedback. All right. Anything else on this topic before we move on? Ryan and Dave, thanks again. It was very informative. Much appreciated. Let's move on to staff updates. Let's start with Chief Peterson and then we will go to Captain Weiss afterwards.
I just have a couple of items for, um, City Council. I just want to give you a heads up that our daily, uh, police calls for service are slowly increasing over the past two weeks, just like they have been ever since we, two months ago, when we, prior to hitting the pandemic, our calls really decreased and now they've slowly continued to increase. And we're just about, uh, where we were before the pandemic hit. And right now, police and fire staff are continuing to work with the school district in their potential plans of holding a drive-through graduation ceremony for Forest Lake seniors on June fifth. And I want to thank Captain Weiss and Fire Chief Newman for their work on that as well. And then last Friday, you probably heard about the food distribution. And, uh, Mayor Bean, I think you wanted, uh, Captain Weiss to, to talk about that, so I'll let him take it from here.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, last Friday, we were able to work with, uh, big collaborative effort between, uh, Washington County Food Services, uh, the Sheriff's Department, Washington County Emergency Management, Forest Lake Fire Department, our, uh, our own Dave Adams, uh, the City Public Works, County Public Works and Second Harvest, excuse me, Second Harvest Heartland. And, um, we had about seven days to prepare for this, uh, first one in Washington County. And, uh, between, uh, ten and about, uh, one o'clock in the afternoon, six hundred, uh, people went through the YMCA parking lot. Uh, and were able to get, uh, multiple bags of produce, fresh produce and, and uh, it was a, it was a really good effort by everybody that was involved. And I think Forest Lake should be proud, uh, that we were first of all, number one, and kind of the trial, the trial city uh, for this and the special thanks, uh, you know, no, no kidding aside to Dave and his crew that, uh, really set our parking and our traffic plan up as, as instructed. And it was, uh, it went flawlessly. So thank you, Dave, uh, for that. The next, uh, couple of items is, uh, you know, within the pandemic, our PPE, our personal protective equipment, we are in great supply within the city. Uh, myself and Al Newman meet on a, you know, if not, uh, every other day, daily basis. And, uh, we are sitting well, we have a running total on everything we have. Uh, we met with, uh, myself, uh, Chief Newman and Chief Peterson, uh, last Friday or what was, what day is it now? Last Thursday. And met with a, a anticipation of bringing our employees back into the building. By no means any decisions have been made, but trying to stay ahead of the game and got some products ordered and some items ordered to ensure some safety, uh, the worker's safety and our employees' safety when they come back, uh, eventually down the road, whenever that day may be. Uh, as the chief mentioned, we are in, uh, full swing with, uh, the high school graduation. Uh, it does fit within the governor's, uh, recommendations uh, when it comes to, you know, social distancing, restrooms and the like. Uh, the plan's still a workable product. I will forward it on to, uh, City Administrator Parish or sorry, Casey, uh, and have him review and pass it on. Just so you guys can take a look at it, but I'm very confident that, uh, we have a plan that is, uh, and you know, the good thing is we, our plan was in play uh, with these things in mind. And when the governor put out his recommendations, uh, it actually supersedes them. So, uh, we're ahead of that. So, uh, and I think that's, uh, that's everything I have. If, uh, Counsel or Mayor, you have any questions of, uh, myself from emergency management perspective?
Any questions for Chief or Captain this evening? Thank you both. Um, let's move on to Patrick and then we'll do Dan after Patrick.
I just have a, a quick couple of notes on the state legislature. Their session is ending on next May, uh, next, next Monday, I should say, on the eighteenth. The news does not look good on bonding bills at this point. They haven't got to it. There's, there's issues in the House with the Republican side of it. Um, so we don't have a lot of faith that that's going to happen. Uh, we also have a liquor licensing issue for the golf course. It probably won't happen this year as well. In other news from the state, uh, they're looking to distribute the federal money that they've gotten from the Federal Care Act. And currently the bill, I think it's in the Senate, says, uh, that they would distribute to local municipalities eighty-seven dollars per capita. But that has to be used to reimburse, uh, expenses related to this emergency. So I'm not sure how much we'd have to be able to keep of that. And then finally, uh, first bad news out of the, the budget for, for twenty twenty-one is it looks like we'll be facing a fifteen percent decline in state shared revenues for, for the streets. So we'll have to plan on that, take a little hit next year as that. And who knows what else will happen and we will continue to monitor that as we go along and as we get closer to August and prepare our budgets. And that's all I have.
So, uh, when you say fifteen percent for, um, reduction, is that our LGA dollars or that's what's being proposed as fifteen percent cut in LGA?
Yeah, the local share for streets right now, yes.
Okay. And that would be effective for our budget year twenty-one or twenty-two?
I believe it's twenty-one.
Mayor City Council.
Ryan, how many?
Comment on that, that we directed our, towards our state aid, construction and maintenance funds. Uh, we did open our seal coat bids Friday. The low bid came in significantly lower than budget, so typically we would add more to the project then. But knowing that information we've received from the states, we'll just stay, stay status quo with the project that we just opened the bids for and, uh, take the savings in the next year. So hopefully then, you know, things bounce back by twenty-two. Uh, and we really didn't miss a beat on the maintenance there, uh, with the construction funds. You know, that's what we asked for a state aid advancements, uh, to fund our portion of the roundabouts. We already secured that money. We did that early enough, so we were ahead of that. And we budgeted conservatively, you know, to fund, uh, we're still waiting on what our local share will be with the two county road projects in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-five. But conservatively enough that we were trying to hoping to squeeze in one of our own local roads. But if things don't work out, then we just won't have a project that we haven't planned for yet and continue to move forward. But we still don't know what's the degree with the county project until those plans and specs and are all developed. So we're all right, but you know, a lot of the state aid funds are tied to, uh, gas tax. You know, in the metro, I'd rather have a wheelage tax that went directly to the city because we have the population to support that. Uh, outer state Minnesota would not argue that with us because they have less population than we, and they want to stay with the gas tax. But as, you know, the gas revenues are obviously going to be down and that's where the fifteen percent is projected to come from because, uh, people aren't driving. And then, you know, just the evolution of, evolution of the electric car. So that's why the fifteen percent email was sent out week or two ago.
So we are not, just I, I want to make sure I understand impact for Goodview and ninety-seven. So this does not change, we use three years of funding for Goodview and ninety-seven, but this does not change that, right? That's, this would be future dollars? Do I understand that right?
So conservatively, we budgeted what, what have been our three years of funding. Now you take fifteen percent off of what that could have been, we're still under that. And, you know, that last money we got from Minda really helped that, that three hundred ninety thousand dollars right at the end. So that was huge.
Okay. Okay. We don't love it, but it's, um, thankfully we're, we use some conservative estimates and will, we'll be okay.
And a, a positive note, sometimes when bad things happen, right? Then something gets deployed like a stimulus package and we've been tracking that. And, you know, with the City Administrator Casey and Public Works Director Adams, we've been tracking stuff that we potentially could get shovel ready if that became available. You know, back in two thousand nine that occurred when stuff happened. So you just, you just never know what gets people out of the hole, right? So we're tracking everything, staying in tune with everything, but being smart about, you know, and responsible with the low bid we just received and we'll just stay with that project and it's gonna be a great project.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Patrick? Dan, and we'll go to Peter after Dan.
Uh, just a couple of quick project updates. Um, the digital downtown launched last week and we have over twenty-three businesses and restaurants that have signed up for it. Um, lottery response on the business and service side of it, which is, which was a surprise to me. I thought we'd see more restaurants initially, but a lot of businesses and service, um, organizations have signed up. I'm gonna take that list and break down the businesses into two sections. It's, the business listing is a little bit long right now, so I'll break, I'll break that down into another sub-section. And then later this week, we'll start rolling that out to the public. Right now it's been sort of a soft launch for businesses and we'll do a rollout to the public next week. Paul from LATV was out last week and started shooting the first round of videos, uh, that the EDA, um, talked about. These videos are just kind of promotional videos, talking about what the local businesses are doing. This first series is gonna really focuses, focusing on how local businesses had to pivot their operations in response to COVID. So it's gonna be kind of a, they're gonna be used as a trial to see what he can produce, but also they get something out of that kind of timely in terms of the current environment with COVID. We do have quite a few businesses that did request a video follow-up. And I'm gonna work with Paul to get those scheduled probably for later in the summer, um, for two reasons. One, he's gonna be extremely busy the next six weeks with graduations. And once he kind of clears that production, he'll have a little bit of timeframe in his, um, production schedule to start working on these business videos. But also he want, we want to try to get businesses back to somewhat normalcy before I go in there and give them a promotional video. We want to make sure that lasts beyond just a sort of kind of unique time period that we're in. So later in the summer, we'll start producing those videos as well. So both those projects are not launched and are clear response so far.
That's great. Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan before we move on? Peter, and we will go to Karen after Peter.
Uh, Your Honor, Counsel, I don't have any, uh, report for you this evening, but I'm happy to answer questions or take direction if you have any for me.
Any questions for Peter? Thanks, Peter. Seeing none, Karen, and we'll go to Ryan after Karen.
Uh, no updates this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Karen? Seeing none, we'll go Ryan and we'll go to Donovan after Ryan.
Mayor City Council, Ryan Goodman, City Engineer, um, we already spoke. We already spoke about the seal coat bids, so those were very favorable. We'll bring back award recommendation at the next City Council meeting. Water Treatment Plant Three is currently undergoing the filter rehab work and contractors on site doing other stuff. The rehab of Water Treatment Plant One, filter work will begin at the first part of winter and just to ensure that plants are all full capacity during the high summer demand. Washington County Bicycle and Ped Plan Survey is still up and open. And we have that posted on the city's website, so make sure we're commenting on that before that closes. And then also with Washington County, we have, I'll be involved with one more project management team meeting this Wednesday prior to then presenting at the City Council Workshop, May 18th on the County State Aid Highway 33 project or Everton Avenue from Broadway Avenue down to 11th Avenue. And then the last project, the Roundabout Project, we are with school out, going to be able to start earlier. So this Friday will be one of our main full access closures. At 7:00 PM, the road will be closed, Highway 97, detours are in place. Public outreach is going through the city's websites and Facebook blast. And then we've also contacted Dispatch today and provided them detour plans and all that. I don't know if I got to the local police department yet or not. Okay, I see a thumbs up. But that scheduled closure is Friday, 7:00 PM through Monday morning, 5:00 AM. It's anticipated the contractor would finish prior to that, but you just don't know, depend on the weather and stuff like that. That'll allow them to finish the storm sewer crossings that will be ultimately built underneath the road and start widening some of the bypass lanes, but will be starting this Friday. So we're three weeks ahead of schedule with, because of the school situation. We'll have weekly updates provided on the city's websites, linked back to MINDOTS and Facebook blast. Dan Unno's been working on a lot of that, so thankful for him. The time he's spent with that's on a short notice here and a pretty big platform. But moving forward, so with that, I'll just open up with any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Karen, could we include those dates of closure on the city email blast this week? I think that'd be helpful and good to hear, Dan, that you've got Facebook teed up with some of those updates as well. I know the school did a communication, which is helpful, whatever we can do to get some, get some word out. It'll certainly impact, impact some folks over that weekend. Okay. Um, and Donovan?
Mayor, Members of Council, as I stated before, there is a planning commission meeting this week, this Wednesday on the 13th. We'll have a variance on the agenda as well as a grading permit for a site that is also applied for to have a self-storage facility. This is on the west side of Everton, west side of 35, just south of Gateway Green and north of the MINDOT yard. I mentioned this one because there are several applications on that and this will be coming to City Council, I assume, on the, at the June 8th meeting. And so just to look for that one and happy to take any questions from Council.
Any questions for Donovan? Thank you, Donovan. Hey, Ryan, I just thought of something. There's been some confusion, some, we, folks have been trained to watch the MINDOT site for major construction projects and there's been some confusion on, apparently, Goodview and 97 isn't listed on their site as a major project area with their usual project updates. Why is that? And just help me guide, set expectations.
So the Goodview Highway 97 project is locally led, so we will have to lead the public outreach. And we've tried to get in touch with MINDOT's communication specialists, but I don't know if they're out of the office with this stuff. So we've been emailing multiple people. There also was a little hiccup this week with the MINDOT project down at Highway 97 and North Shore Trail, where some of the MINDOT staff that we typically work with are on leave right now because of the COVID-19 situation. And therefore, they didn't even invite the city to the pre-con. So we didn't have some of the contacts. And then all of a sudden, there was some trucking in front of a house that it shouldn't have been happening. But we finally got ahold of some people out there and have a guy in the field that just stopped by on site and dealt with it too on behalf of the city. So we're making all good efforts to try to coordinate with MINDOTS on our local project. But the main platform will be city-led, so it'll be on our city website and your Facebook blast or email blast, and then link back to MINDOT.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Moving on to council updates, let's start with Councilmember Husnick and then we'll do Councilmember Beistrum.
Madam Mayor, we've been busy late every evening this week, so I have more updates. Sorry to tell you.
No, very good. Councilmember Beistrum.
Just a couple of quick ones for me. Many of you probably know the Perks, Trolls and Lakes Commission did approve the cancellation of Arts in the Park through the month of June at their meeting last week. And I have been asked to pass along to Administration and Council from some Castlewood members. Thank you for getting them up and running, so.
Going well? So in a, some positive feedback?
Oh, yeah, that, to, to pass along a thank you to Administration.
Oh, excellent, good.
Yeah, to pass along a thank you to Administration and Council for making things happen this year. Getting it, getting it, getting it up.
I did, I was a little, maybe it was just, I, once it was explained to me, it made sense, but it wasn't my initial reaction. So maybe worth mentioning here as well that although farmers markets are a essential service, I think there's still maybe a little bit of question on when we would start our farmers market. There's a fair, there's a very robust set of guidelines that have to be followed to have that. And so I think there's some question on whether vendors are able to support that format and how we might support that. And so I think the start date, although technically you could start it in our typical start date in June, is yet to be determined based off of, based off of when vendors are available and when we're able to accommodate all of those requirements. So I know Jamie's been working hard at that. And I had just assumed that it was essential and that we would have it. But again, that was a wrong assumption on my part. And I, I understand there's a lot of work that goes into making sure that that's able to take place safely. So.
Yeah.
Support her and.
I don't, I don't think.
Being thoughtful in that.
It's not the, it won't be the same format. It's been, you know, and there are a lot of social distancing policies that have to be addressed. You know, how do you, how do you maintain a distance between customers and, and the vendors? What does that flow look like? So, but I know Jamie's talked quite a bit about it at the meetings and it appears to me she's on top of it in a big way. So Patrick might be able to address that as well. So it's, it sounds like she's, you know, really trying to make this happen, has a fairly clear understanding of what that needs to look like, so.
Yeah, she's, she's working out real hard. We may have to, because of the distancing, move that to City Hall Parking Lot instead, just to spread everybody out. But we're trying to, I talked to her last Friday when we were in the office at the same time. So we'll have an answer pretty quick.
I also just think setting the expectation that it's different this year in structure than Arts in the Park, having it in a different location just helps to change expectations of what that event is going to be. Because to everybody's point, it is going to look different than what it has looked like in the past.
And I, and my understanding, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but just listening to Jamie, the, one of the reasons, the consideration is to move it is that should Arts in the Park be able to come back, they would be able to potentially keep those two even separated. So the, you know, the concert in the park and the farmers market. So you're not, you know, pulling in, you're, you're, you're naturally separating those groups of people.
Yeah, that's correct. We don't believe there could be room for both of them if we have to continue social distancing like we are, something that we will have to do. You know, you get enough people for a concert, they can spread out. But if you have farmers markets and cars, then it's better right now to separate them, I think.
I agree. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Munson, and then we'll do Councilmember Gerard.
I have no updates.
Very good. Councilmember Gerard?
I have no update tonight.
Excellent. I just have a quick update this evening. I spoke again with Vicki at the Legion today. The Legion is meeting again today to talk about what they will do for whatever format they might choose to do to recognize Memorial Day. And I know they're working through some details of what that might look like virtually and in small groups. And then also, we set a time to reconnect on Thursday to talk about the Fourth of July with the governor's orders expiring here over the weekend and into Monday. By Thursday, we may have some updates, we don't know. And we'll just do a touch base on, kind of walk me through the punch list of activities and just compare notes from a city perspective and a Legion perspective. It'll be the first time we've had a combined group discussion. We've had some small, small conversations back and forth, but just one opportunity to hear where they're at and making here where we are at and see where we're at for making some recommendations. So more to come on that. With that, that is the end of our planned agenda for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for another great discussion. I look forward to seeing you all in person. But until then, thanks for making these virtual meetings work. And Karen, can we, or actually, can I have a motion for adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Councilwoman Husnick.
We've got a, a motion and a second. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Munson.
Hi, sorry.
Member Beistrum. Hi. Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Mayor Bean.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. Be well, be safe, have a great night.